Good evening, everyone. It's so great to see everyone. I hate that thing. Um, welcome. So great to see everyone. I'm just gonna call the meeting to order. Um, welcome. It's great to see a lot of familiar faces. So, just gonna jump right in and call the meeting to order. Items to be removed from the consent agenda. Note: If a board member wishes to remove an item on the consent agenda for further discussion, a motion to remove the item from the consent agenda must be made. However, once a motion and second are made for the consent agenda, items listed below, simple questions can be asked regarding any of them, as you would normally do for individual resolutions. Consent agenda. A: Approval of minutes of the 12/20/22 work session and business meeting. I have a motion.
So moved.
No, I can do—sorry, all. B: Personnel— It's been a long day. Uh, B: Personnel action. C: Approval of the budget transfer. D: Acceptance of arrangements for appropriate special programs and services as recommended by CSC CPSA. Recommended action: That the Board of Education approves the recommending consent agenda, items A through D, as listed on the attachments and above. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Resolution for action. A: Adoption of the 2023-2024 school calendar. Recommended action: That the Board of Education adopts the 2023-2024 school calendar as listed on the attachment. Did you want to comment on that?
Yes, I will. Thank you. So, hello, everybody. Welcome. Happy New Year. I wanted just to mention that every once in a while, you have a calendar year that has a lot of complexity. This seems to be the 23-24 school year, a very challenging calendar for a lot of different reasons. For one, it is a leap year next year, and so that adds a day, but it also factors into the calendar. That said, because I know that in conversation with the board members, there was a question about the planning of the spring vacations and the—I would call midwinter vacation. And we are kind of betwixt and between. For next—the 24 exam calendar by the state, in early April, begins the state assessment process, as well as the NICE SLAB. As well as, the first week of May, we have the AP exam schedule. So if we would set our spring break close to the end of April, it would really create problems for our high school AP students, who use that final week of April to review and plan. Similarly, because there's a lot of testing in April, we—I'm making the recommendation to adopt the calendar as detailed. That is, to have a late-last week in March, spring break, to recognize the holidays in the spring in different ways. And I think it all works. And it's interesting, because regionally, I think many of our—my superintendent colleagues face the same challenges, and we all've kind of settled in on a similar schedule—calendar. So there is no perfect calendar. That's for sure.
So with that said, may I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor.
Can I take an opportunity to just pause for a minute? Because I've wanted to welcome and just formally introduce Dr. Tamar Walker, who is Assistant Superintendent for Student Support Services, who officially began on January 3rd. This is the seventh day of work, and so welcome, Tamar, to you. And just to give you an opportunity to say hello to the cameras, to the community, and to the board.
Welcome.
Thank you, everyone. This has been a positive whirlwind. It's been extremely great—a great feeling to be welcomed by everyone and to—you know, transitioning from one place to another can have its ups and downs, but this has been extremely positive. With Dr. Mazzoni, in December, we were able to have a really good transition time, so at least nine days I was able to be in the district with her. And so, just being able to get on the ground running the first day, and just jump in and meet with families already, and with teachers and leaders, it's been extremely positive. And so, I'm excited to just be able to utilize my skill sets and to just support the district's vision and support our students that need it. So, thank you. Thank you so much for the warm welcome.
Thank you. Welcome. Welcome. We're thrilled you're here. B: Appointment of the 504 ADA Student Matters Officer. Be resolved that Dr. Tamar Walker, Assistant Superintendent of Student Support Services, be appointed 504 ADA Officer for Student Matters for the 2022 school year. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
C: Appointment of Compliance Officers for All Employees in Student Matters. Resolve that Dr. Tamar Walker, Assistant Superintendent of Student Support Services, and Mario Washington, High School Assistant Principal, be appointed Compliance Officers for all employees in Student Matters, including sexual harassment for the 2022-2023 school year. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor. I'm now gonna move on to reports and discussions, and welcome Jenny up to lead us.
So while Jenny is making her way to the podium, I just want to take this opportunity to acknowledge and recognize Jenny Rodriguez, Administrator on Special Assignment. Last spring, I had the opportunity to recommend to the board that Jenny take on, for the 22-23 school year, a special assignment to focus in on diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging initiatives. And so, though—though here we are in January, in some ways, the opportunity to—really to take on the special assignment really focused on, in some ways, two areas. One, to understand, really, the areas of focus and where to begin under this new role. And also, to use her—this opportunity to connect with regional area—I would say professionals who have been doing this work, to get a sense of what it may look like in Mamaroneck. And so, with that, it's a pleasure to welcome Jenny to report on her focus for this first half of the school year. So, thank you.
Thank you. I hope you can hear me. I'm on the short side, so I hope you can hear. But, thank you, everybody. Thank you for being here. Thank you to the board for giving me this opportunity to present. So I'm super excited about just talking through some of the things that I've focused on, though I've been in the role since July, but really, since September, when students and faculty and staff have been on board. So with that, we're gonna get started. So, I wanted to just—you know, give a little background about who I am. And I say this because all of these pieces of who I am are the perspective that I bring to this work, and so I think it's important to share. So, my family and I moved to the Bronx when I was about three years old via Puerto Rico, but my family's Dominican. And I—so I grew up in the South Bronx. When I entered kindergarten, I could not speak a word of English, so I often think about RL students as I do this work. And then, at 14, I had the opportunity to attend a boarding school in Connecticut. And I always say that it really changed my life and my family's life. And I then went to Syracuse University. I decided to do Teach for America, because I wanted other students to have access to the opportunities that I had had at Pomfret. It was supposed to be a two-year stint. This is year 25. And so, just a little bit of my work professionally, prior to coming to Mamaroneck, I have been a co-founder of three different schools. One in Newark, New Jersey, as a Spanish teacher, one in the Bronx as Director of College Guidance, and in Washington Heights, I was the administrator who oversaw our high school component. And something important to note is that these schools are known as 90-90-90 schools. If you do not know that language, it means that 90% of the students were on free or reduced lunch, 90% of the students were from a historically marginalized community, and 90% of the students achieved threes and fours in their standardized test scores. So they were deemed as very successful schools. We had 100% of students apply and have accepted—and get accepted to college. And so, a few years ago—this was actually my seventh year here—I decided to take—you know, the journey to the suburbs and became Assistant Principal at Mamaroneck High School. So, I wanted to really center this presentation around our board's equity policy, because I think that—you know, we are very fortunate to work in a district where the board has made a strong commitment to this equity work, far ahead of many of our other neighboring districts. So, throughout my presentation, you will see that I will reference that equity policy and really pull out and dissect different parts of it, and how I feel that the work I decided to focus on this year really brings that to life. So, this policy was adopted in 2021, and I just want you to take a second to just read to yourself as I read aloud. I'm not gonna read through the entire policy, but I think that there's some really powerful words. And so, "Our board commits to creating and maintaining a positive and inclusive learning environment where all students, regardless of race, ethnicity, gender, religion, sexual identity orientation, ability or disability, country of origin, or other identity category or characteristics, feel safe, included, and welcomed, and accepted, and experience a sense of belonging and academic success." So I want you to just take a few minutes. This I won't read out loud, because I am going to focus on pieces of this throughout the presentation, but if you could just take a couple of minutes to sort of read through and familiarize yourself with—these are some bullet points under our equity policy. So, in the spring of 2022, last spring, Dr. Shapps announced his position of Administrator on Special Assignment, and he explained a little bit about what the goals were of that position. But, you know, in my mind, it's really to create the roadmap for the position of Equity Leader in the district. I—for those—some of you may know, helped co-chair our District Equity Team, and so I was excited by the idea of being able to take on this work. In preparing—because the reality is that in public schools, this is a really new role, like, really new. And even in private schools where it has existed, they're still working their way through how to do this work. And you'll hear me say that quite a few times tonight. But I decided to use the following tools to really give myself a sense of what some of the areas are that I should be prioritizing. So, I used the equity policy, which I referenced earlier, the equity plan that we worked on and was adopted by the board as well. New York State has a culturally responsive and sustaining framework, so we use that, and the equity audit that the board supported last school year. So let's unpack this policy. If you would just take a moment to just read it to yourself and think to yourself, what are some pieces of this policy? What are the words that stick out to you? So if we were in a different setting—this would be interactive, and you all would share that out loud, the teacher and me—but I'm gonna share sort of what stands out for me. So for me, you know, one of the things that—that stands out is culturally responsive learning and working environments, right? So it's for our students and for the staff that support our students. High academic achievement, because one of the things that I've always kept centered at my work—and that's why I brought up the schools where I worked at before—is that that is our goal for all students. But we want our students to be nourished, celebrated, and welcomed, and actually, really, everyone that works here. So what does this look like? Well, there's work that actually has preceded this role. I've been fortunate to be involved in some of it, but it's our SEL work that we have now called SEQUITY. It's our SEQUITY framework. It's when you go to the different schools and the amazing school-wide celebrations that honor where people are from. It's culturally responsive staff professional development that happens in schools. It's programs like our Scholars Program at the high school and our JumpStar Program, which I'll talk to a little bit about later on. It's our board conversations with our students that we've recently started. It's hiring and retention initiatives that we want to make sure that—that we get off the ground. Is our CPAC curriculum inventory. And so, CPAC is our organization that we're working with out of Teachers College that's helping us really make sure that our curriculum is vast and inclusive and representative of all of our learners. It's about creating affinity spaces and amplifying that work. And it's about our Cobb and Crown Apple Belonging work, which I will also reference. And these are just a few things that I highlighted. If you've talked to people throughout the district, they would probably have many more initiatives that they would want to share, but I just wanted to highlight a few. So now to continue to unpack. So, we have committed to provide equitable, inclusive, and diverse opportunities for all students to reach their higher—highest potential. And so, one of the things that I—again, as a former college counselor and high school administrator—wanted to look at was our data for our—for some of our marginalized groups that—with my ear on the ground, I felt like many of us had concerns about their academic performance or—and their student—the standardized test scores. So, in a previous presentation, we talked a little bit about our students overall. We even unpacked a little bit about our students in poverty. Today, I'm gonna talk specifically about our Black/African-American students and our Latino/Hispanic students. So in looking at the data, it's interesting, because it's—you know, it—it's really complex, right? So in the areas where you see yellow boxes, it's either—it's usually because it's not a significant number of students that have taken the exam in that particular year or cohort. And we do have a smaller cohort of Black students than we do our Latino students, so you'll sort of see that play out. But, you know, I just want you to take a look at it. We are still—you know, looking closer at that data, but some of the things that stand out is that in some years and in some areas, our Black/African-American students actually are performing strongly, and in some areas, they are not, right? And so, these are—this is important data for us to look at and look at how we want to better support our students. If you look at our Hispanic-Latinx students, again, it's—it's a little bit further in terms of some students—we may have less students that are achieving that 90% proficiency. However, we do have a variety of student achievement, right? So, we can't even just say—because when I went into this data, I wanted to say a story. Like, I wanted to just—I'm like, yes! And it's not that simple, right? It's not just one single story. So then I decided to think about—again, as my—in my mind, as an educator who's been doing this for a while, and then, in my mind, as that college counselor, to dig into our academics and how are students succeeding academically. And I could've started with any subject, but I actually decided to start with math, looking at our students and their access to accelerated math courses. So why math? Well, because in my role as a—you know, starting these schools and also as a college counselor, math is actually—and actually, Athena, you said this at the presentation—math can be a gatekeeper or a gateway for students. And that was something that I learned very early on. And so, I wanted to look to see the access that our students had, how we could improve that. And so, I started with a program that is out of Homics Middle School. The program is called Ramp Up. It's a program that existed before me, but we wanted to increase the students that had access to it. And so, one of the very first things I did was, we'll take that on, right? So we had a very targeted approach to reach out to families. It was the approach that I used many times in the Bronx and in Washington Heights, to reach out to families, and—and it worked, right? So we had—our targeted students did end up attending, and we are now tracking their progress, right? Because what we want to know is, was that support that we offered them—it's a support that happens in the summer—was that support enough to have them be successful? If not, then what else do we need to do? So we're in the process of observing these students in classes, having conversations with teachers about these students, and collecting data to inform our next step, so that early spring, we can really start to think about what this will look like for this summer. So, again, you know, there is the role of the academics, but we also know that—you know, we are not the sum of just our standardized test scores or even our grades in our classes, right? Like, we wanted to make sure that all of our students were taking full advantage of what this amazing district had to offer, and we know that there is a connection between having a sense of belonging and your engagement, not just in schools either. But I—I put this quote from Cobb and Crown Apple, which I'll talk a little bit about, because it's a—they're—they're folks that we have partnered up with to do this work of belonging and ensuring that all of our students have that sense of belonging. But I just—this quote stood out to me. "We believe that educators must focus on shaping inclusive environments intentionally designed to foster a sense of belonging by honoring the dignity of every person." And I know that at the heart, we all that are in education, believe this. But I think that—you know, part of the work is that it looks different, depending on who that group is that is trying to belong, and we want to make sure that we are examining the ways in which we are inclusive, but also the ways in which we are not. So, one of the things that I've actually done this year, which has actually been really exciting, has been to—to work with John Crown Apple in their framework that they work with schools. And essentially, what they do is that they help schools identify what are some of the areas—or who are those folks that don't feel like they are a part of the school community? Because there is a great deal of research that—that connects that, right? If you do not feel engaged, you are not gonna want to do anything, right? Like, you're not gonna really care about the institution that you're in. And so, what that looks like is—you know, we started off the year having some of these conversations with John Crown Apple in smaller groups, but then we had him come and do a keynote address, where he addressed all of our staff members—all of our staff members, including support staff, clerical staff. I believe it might've been the first time that we've done something to that magnitude where we had one address for everyone. And the idea was that we wanted to make sure that we shared this understanding of this message of belonging and our focus, right? Because when you first hear belonging, you're like, what does that mean? We all belong. But he really did a great job unpacking it. And from that, we also have school-based belonging teams. So every school has a group of folks, about six or seven people, who have committed themselves to dig into this work. So what does that look like? For starters, we're getting trained on what does it look like to work within a school, identify a problem, and come up with solutions. And so, we actually—that day that he spoke, we distributed a staff-wide survey, a belonging survey. And with the idea that schools would use this survey and this data to really think about how the community feels in their building, and think about ways in which they could increase that sense of belonging for all. We will then move into having student surveys. That will be the next phase. Part of the work with having the staff survey is almost to help us go through the process of what it looks like to conduct a survey, analyze the responses, do some empathy interviews on a smaller scale, and then think about how we—how that looks like for our students. So we're looking forward to that, because I think we will—we've already learned a great deal about our—you know, how staff feels, and so I think it'll be able—we'll be able to answer a lot of the ques—I'm hoping—a lot of the questions that we have had for—about our students. Another thing that we've really—that I've worked on this year or focused on are affinity spaces for students and families. So, last spring, we sort of started with some affinity spaces for students, and I've just added to that work with affinity spaces for families. So I want to talk a little bit about why affinity spaces. Why are they important? We have a great team of adults that help support this work, that work directly with the students to make sure that they are providing that safe space for students. And these are some of the goals that they have for—for that work. It's providing a safe space that supports students' emotional and academic support. It validates any student concerns, strengthen problem-solving skills, promote gender and racial equity, and strengthening interpersonal relationships. There's actually—I could go on. There are definitely more goals that—that we have, and reasons why these affinity spaces are important. And—you know, we can talk about this probably the whole presentation, because there's a bunch of research, a ton of data, on how these spaces are helpful for—for—for anyone to have. This is just a list of some of the affinity spaces that we have. Again, we—there are—there are several others, but these are the main ones that I wanted to—to sort of highlight. My Brothers Keeper and My Sisters Keeper are actually—they were actually national programs, so there's support from—there's curricular support from the state, you know, that helps us work with that. We have GSA, who's—now has changed their name, but to help support some of our LGBTQIA students. We have our Multicultural Student Union, which we've had with a previous name before. We have Dos Caminos, which is our dual-language program. We have some students that meet in those affinity spaces. We have it in the middle school, but we will come into a high school near you pretty soon. We have a really awesome—like, really awesome program called Club del Intercambio Cultural to help with our newcomer students. And we have a BIPOC student group in both middle and high school. These are just some pictures, because I couldn't resist—just some of the students in their affinity spaces. Again, you know, everybody spams me a bunch of pictures, but I just wanted to share a couple, and I wanted to highlight, again, the adults that help make this work possible. This is the space at—at Homics, but I think—you know, in talking with our leaders of these affinity spaces, you know, they're so passionate about this work, and many of them have taken this on, in addition to everything else that they had been doing. But, you know, Kayla said something that—that really stood out to me. She said, "These groups and their meetings provide needed outlet for our youth. The braving conversations and environments only serve to empower them and help them see their full potential. None of these groups are about putting on a performance or completing a lesson plan." And I—I—I bring that up, because of course, we have goals for our students in doing these programs, but we also know that sometimes things happen, and—and they have a need to discuss them right away, and it's pretty awesome that they have the space to do that. So then, one of the things that I thought was important was to provide affinity spaces for our families, right? So that—again, this is work that I had done in previous schools, although we—you know, we didn't have the fancy name of affinity spaces. We just—they were parent meetings for our Spanish-speaking parents. But, the idea was, I always thought about, what is it that my mom needed to know? Like, what did my parents need to know? And my parents were super supportive in the ways that they could be, but what did they need to know to help support me? And not putting the burden just on the kids to provide that. So one of the things that our equity audit highlighted was our real need to—to really build community with our community organizations. And I'm so grateful that it highlighted that, because it really pushed me to not just think of, oh, I've done this before, this is how I'm gonna do it. But to really reach out to some of the community organizations that know our families really well, and that have really just really amazing ways of—of presenting work and communicating. So, I've worked with the Community Resource Center and with Cure to really help tailor the two groups that we have right now, which have just—you know, gone off the ground this year. The group for our Spanish-speaking families and the group for parents of Black, Latino, Indigenous, Asian families. So, these goals that you see here are actually the goals that these families have themselves come up with, right? Because the thing about affinity spaces is that they really need to be owned by the representatives of that group. So, you know, just— So, you know, just, again, want to share some of the goals that they highlighted. So, it was to build community with other families who have had similar experiences, to discuss ways to academically support their children, to discuss the hidden curriculum, right? So, when we think about, and I often use my own daughter as an example, there were things that I did not know myself as a student that are now parts of my daughter's everyday life. I can talk to her about my roommate, because she sees my roommate. So, she knows that idea of going away to college instinctively. I can talk about my AP experience and what were the things that I had to do. So, our families that haven't had that experience, because they didn't go to Mamaroneck or they haven't gone to school in the States, really need that leg up. They really want to support their families, right? But then also discuss the ways to emotionally support their children. So, again, you know, my parents were not in a, we were in the South Bronx. They were not in a mixed community. There was a lot of Black and Latino families, right? So, they didn't know the struggle that I faced about, you know, entering a space where I was not a part of the dominant culture. And so, again, as much as they wanted to help me, they didn't have the tools. And we see that the families want those tools. Discuss issues of belonging, bias, discrimination that impacts their children, because we know that these issues are real and they do occur. And then also discuss issues that they themselves may be facing in dealing with the school system. And so, these were some of our, this was our, one of our meetings with our Spanish-speaking families. And we tried to pack these meetings with a lot of different things. Once we get, you know, everyone's really busy, so once we get families in, we try to support them with what we feel are all the needs. And this is just some feedback from our families. Gracias por la información. Me gustaría tener más reuniones sobre el sistema. Estoy interesada de participar en clases de tecnología. Gracias. Quisiera una presentación sobre cómo seguir ayudando a los hijos mental y educacional. Esta presentación fue muy buena. Me gustaría saber más sobre los clubes. So, I hope you can use your cognit skills and see what words are kind of English cognits. But I think that the important piece here is that the need and the desire from our families is here, right? This was our English-speaking group. And it's funny, because it was such an intense conversation that I didn't even take pictures. I forgot to take pictures. But I wanted to take pictures representing the work. And I love some of the comments that came out of our meeting, and some I could relate to, right? So, "I wish a group like this existed for my parents when I was in school." And this was a parent who themselves had attended a predominantly white institution. "I feel hopeful, looking forward to having a safe space. I feel understood, and I'm not the only one going through all of the racial issues going on." I thought that was, these were just some of the statements. And then the work looks like a million other things, right? So, one of the things that I think, you know, and I thank the board for really taking the lead on this, but is helping really students utilize their voice and helping them really recognize that not only do they have a voice, because we know they have a voice. They, we know that. They have come here and told us. But we, that their voice is valid, that their concerns are valid, and that people are listening and want to do something about it. So, these are some of the meetings that happened right here at lunchtime. And, you know, Kimberly Omolodu is one of our counselors, who, you know, because I pull anybody that's willing to help into anything. So, she helped me group some kids. And one of the things that she said recently really, again, stood out to me, but she says, "It takes deliberate, excuse me, it takes deliberate or intentional thought, time, energy, follow-up, and follow-through to create and maintain positive and inclusive learning environments for all of our students, which leads to a feeling of belonging followed by academic success." And so, our first group that we met with were transfer students. We noticed that it felt like we were getting an increased number of transfer students here at the high school, and we wanted to hear about their experience. We also met with students from our Jump Start Program. It's a program that helps support some students sort of get a jump start or ahead of the game to high school, and they meet in the summer. There's one at HOMICS as well. And they also meet throughout the school year for some homework support. And again, they really told us about, you know, many of these students are either first-generation or Black and Latino students, not all, but many. And they really did a great job at explaining their perspective. I know Ariana, I know Amy's not here, but Sally, I think, came to one, and Dream came to one. You know, so Athena, so I don't know if you want to add anything? Yeah, yeah, that'd be great.
First of all, before I do, I'm so sorry. I meant to say at the very beginning, but better late than never. This entire meeting is being translated by our amazing translator, Liz Peras. I'm going to say that in Spanish, not well. La reunión está siendo tradecida al español. So, part of our commitment as a board this year was to also invest in this work. So, with the help of Jenny and also Kayla, because not represented, was, we ran a similar group at HOMICS as well, was to really have time with our students that's not in this formal setting, to really hear their voices in a safe, just dialogue space. And so, I've attended all of them. And I think it's been profoundly important and enlightening. And I think each one has informed us about decisions that we then take back to the board, and we then think about when we think about budget, when we think about safe spaces, when we think about program. All the things that we do as a board come down to how we support our students. And hearing from our students about what that support looks like and needs to look like, what's working, what they need more of, helps inform that. And there's nothing more powerful than their voices. So, that's really who we're here for. So, it's been fantastic. I'm so grateful to Jenny and to Kayla for helping us organize it, because without you, we couldn't be doing it. And we continue. We have few groups to come this spring. Also, at HOMICS, we did it, and we're going to look at a similar model at the high school where we invited the parents as well, which was lovely for, it was also new families to district. And similarly, these were people who had never been into HOMICS. This was now probably mid-fall. And just the feeling of joy and connecting with, you know, two people who spoke the same language, who hadn't met anyone else in our town yet who spoke the same language. And just those connection points were so powerful. And I think just, we feel incredibly grateful to be doing this work.
Yeah. Our next group is, is going to be our LGBTQIA students, which we're, they're excited, we're excited. And I think that that's the important piece too, that our students leave these meetings feeling heard and valued and validated. So, I'm definitely looking forward to more of these. It's looked like, you know, starting some new initiatives, right? Of things that, again, taking my old world and thinking about what our students need. So, you know, one of the very first things we did in September was we attended a college fair for historically Black colleges and universities at New Rochelle. And again, you know, one of the things that I can't say enough is that in doing this work, you know, the challenge of it, but the beauty of it is that every time you do something, you uncover 10 other things that you need to do. So, you know, this really gave us some great ideas of other things that we want to do moving forward, such as panels of alumni, either from historically Black colleges or just alumni of color, that are alumni from Mamaroneck. I mean, we have a million different ideas, but it was really powerful to see. I, again, didn't include all the pictures, but to see kids having some of these conversations about schools they had never heard of, but feeling empowered was pretty amazing. So, again, you know, we're going to continue those kinds of initiatives. Another area of my work, so I want to highlight from a different part of our policy, which states, "Develop the individual and organizational knowledge, attitudes, skills, and practices to create culturally responsive learning and working environment." And so, there, I really focused on this idea of working environment, right? So, we want to make sure, in order for us to have an environment where students feel safe and like they belong and heard, we need to make sure that we have adults that feel this way in the building as well. So, we also know that representation matters, right? This was something that actually came up in a board meeting earlier this year. Representation of all kinds matters to all of our students. So, again, part of my work, you know, early on was, "I'm going to focus on student achievement, and we're going to go..." But I really realized very quickly the importance of, you know, the saying of having the right people on the bus, the importance of really making sure that we are hiring, recruiting, and then also retaining our diverse staff. And so, something that I will be launching in the, in this spring semester, which we sort of started at the end of last year, but we're really going to go this time, go strong, is affinity spaces for our staff, faculty and staff. So, making sure that they also have these safe spaces and places where they have an opportunity to process whatever they may be experiencing in order to then better serve our students. Some other things that I do during my day, because people are always like, "What do you do?", is learning walks. So, you know, I knew HOMICS, and I knew the high school, obviously, but I've gotten to know our elementary schools. And that has been really powerful, to go into the buildings. And one of the things that, you know, it's going through the lens of, if you look, the one on your left is our, it's our Rubric RBT work that we use to really talk through and write our observations. And then on the right is actually our framework for our culturally responsive working curriculum. And this was something that was put together with the support of CPET. That's the Center for Professional Education of Teachers. And we really worked with our, before I was even in this role formally, we really worked with our social studies teachers to, in secondary level, to really think about what are ways that we could look at our curriculum and make sure that we were providing our students a culturally responsive and sustaining education. And we based it off of our state's framework, because we do have, as I said earlier, a state framework. And so, when I'm going into these buildings, I'm really going into these classrooms, I'm going with both tools in hand. You know, we've just started the work with the framework, the CRSE framework that we have. But it's important for me to see, is this something that is doable? Can we really look at a classroom and, you know, see if these components are in a teacher's instruction or in their classroom? Not at all with our goal of anything, you know, punitive at all. It's more additive. It's making sure that we have these added components that strengthen our teaching and learning. So, in addition, you know, we still have our District Equity Team that's led by Leon White and Bonnie Sloughman. These are our co-chairs of the DET. So, they also work with our Mamaroneck Equity in Education Leaders that we have in each building. So, we have one in each building. And so, a lot of my work this year has been, you know, sort of working with them and having that alignment, working on having that alignment to make sure that this is, you know, we're, of course, committed to our equity plan and living it, and it's a living, breathing document. And also, what are the best ways in which we could use our, you know, our abbreviation is meals, our meals to deliver some of the professional development that we have for our staff. So, this is the, again, another piece of it. And I want us to really take these words in, because this is the crux of the work, right? So, "Where differences will not just be seen as strength, but will be nourished, celebrated, and welcomed, because they are what makes students and families unique." And I wanted to focus this, on this part of our policy, because, you know, it really goes beyond just saying, "Oh, we're all different, and it's going to be great." But it's really about, are we taking advantage of these differences and really celebrating everyone in our community? And some of that means, even though I started my presentation talking about standardized test scores, but, you know, in a lot of the work that I've been reading, as we all try to decipher how we do this work, you know, we really talk about it being beyond just the standardized test scores. Though those are very important and are areas that we need to dissect and analyze, but there's so much more to this work than just that. And so, I have two quotes from an article. I believe Bob shared this article with the board, and I have cited there, that really have stood out to me, because it, again, it resonates, because it's really what I've heard from my counterparts at other districts, right? So, it's, "A K-12 Equity Officer's work is nuanced and complex. If they are to support the distinct, excuse me, the district in its pursuit of dismantling inequities, the Equity Officer needs to take a layered approach. The work of an Equity Officer is much more than just improving student test scores." And again, it is not at all to say that those are not important measures. But one of the things that I hope you saw, and the little glimpse that I gave about what I've been doing over the last four months, is that layered approach. And I think that that is one that I've taken on, but it's also what we, as the district, because all of this work doesn't just lie in my hands. There are a lot of hands that are taking several steps to make sure that this is work that lives on. And really, it's about work about humans, right? It's the work about how people feel. And we know that when you feel better, you do better. And often, what's better for me may not be what's better for you. And so, part of that work this year has really been unpacking what our needs of our students has been. And so, the work continues, right? Because I literally feel like I've just scratched the surface. And again, every time I have a brilliant idea of this great thing that we're going to do that's going to solve the whatever, then I peel back, and there's 10 more issues that I'm gladly working with folks to help solve. But it's really something that we're just getting started. And so, in thinking about what this looks like, not only for the spring, but in the next upcoming years, it's really continuing to examine access through the district. And again, you know, there are so many areas for us to look at that, and that is part of my equity work. It's using the CPET framework to really do inventory across disciplines. And we have started that work, right, with our English departments and our other departments, but it's really continuing that work. It's implementing strategies to increase support for students, right? Because now we're telling students, like, "Listen, challenge yourself. You can do all these things. This is important." We're telling families that. But we want to make sure that we have as many supports in place as we can. It is continuing to foster and develop these affinity spaces, right? So, one of the things that some of the families sent us feedback is, you know, "I really hope that these continue, that this is not just a one-time meeting." So, it's making sure that we've strengthened those and thinking of ways to get those families together to support one another. It's looking at our special education and the intersectionality. So, that's something that I haven't even touched yet, but it's huge, and it's greatly important to me. I oversaw the Special Education Department in the high school. And so, there could be a whole presentation just on that. And then it's looking at other groups, you know, and the data on other groups. Looking at our, a growing category that we have now is multiracial students. And it's actually a very diverse group, because, you know, we kind of click to see, like, "Who's identifying us as?" And it's a very diverse group. So, it's a, it's a growing group, and it's a group that we want to look at the data more closely. Our Asian students, who are also, are a smaller, much smaller percentage of our overall community. But again, in my work in the high school, you know, I had families often talk to me about their experience with their students, their children who are Asian. And it's about looking, you know, having a closer look at our LGBTQIA students and making sure that we are listening and... making sure that we are listening and, and really providing supportive environments for them. It's continuing to foster these relationships with community organizations. Again, we have like 900 ideas of how we can partner up. The CRC came and spoke to our families, and they have so much great programming, and we wanna make sure that we keep that bridge going. And really, so much of my work that, you know, that I see and that gives me the greatest pleasure, is to be able to be that support for our students and our families. And again, for a later presentation, so I hope that the board invites me again, but, you know, part of my work has not just been with our students of color, actually. You know, I've actually had amazing conversations with our OKRA students, who are doing the original civic research in action, and really amazing questions that they're asking about equity and inclusion. I helped do a, a training for our peer leaders, so that they would then, about belonging, so they would then impact our 7th graders that they work with. I am meeting with students from one of our social justice classes. The work lives on, because I'm there, that role is there. And so, I can be a resource to our, to all of our students, and that has been really amazing. And really trying to be that support for our staff as well, you know? It's not easy to come into a community where you clearly come from a different background, but we all really bring amazing things to the table, and it's so important and so valuable for our students. And so, it has been so far a pleasure to do, and it's been difficult work and it's draining work. And I feel like sometimes, all I do is think DEI, and I'm the person that's constantly bringing up that lens in everything. But it's great, honestly, to speak to other districts and to be able to talk about the things that we are doing and the initiatives that we are doing. And it doesn't mean that it's done or perfect or by any means, but it means that we have taken the brave steps to carry on this work. Right? So, thank you.
So, thank you, Jenny, for that amazing presentation, and more importantly, for doing this work. We're so grateful to have you here with us tonight and in general, doing this work every single day. With that, I'm gonna open it up to the board for questions, and then we'll open it up to the community. Are there any?
Um, ooh, can I start?
Of course.
There we go. Can you hear me? Is it on?
Yeah.
Thank you so much. This is fantastic. Couple of questions for you, and excuse my ignorance. When you talk about affinity spaces, are we talking about, is it location of rooms? Is it meetings? What are they, what do they look like to those people who are not in that space?
No, that's a great question. So affinity spaces are any spaces, I mean, we call them spaces, but it's groups, right? And affinity groups are any like group of people. So, when, when it's time for me to, to present out to the staff about what groups, they will tell me what they felt like, you know, if they feel like they want an LGBTQIA group, or they feel like they want a group of teachers of color, that kind of thing. I started with the Spanish-speaking group, because I saw a need, and I was constantly like, "If I could just get these families in a room," you know, "and I could just tell them a few things." And for our BIPOC families, kind of same thing, right? Because there was that need. But it's not the only need. I know that there, there are families, and it gets a little bit more complicated, but some of our families who have students in the spectrum of LGBTQIA, they, they want to have a space to talk. I know that, you know, our, some of our families that are special education families, I know we have formerly SEPTA, but I never remember the new name.
Student support.
Student support. It's so easy. Why would I not remember? You know, but maybe they need something else. So it's really just offering a space where there are people with commonalities that can openly dialogue.
And then my other question is, looking at that lovely list of next steps, and knowing how stretched you are, how do you prioritize that, that list with what you currently have on your plate to what, I mean, you know, the other wonderful things that you want to tackle, which I think one of the things that we haven't necessarily tackled as much of is the world of special education, as you've mentioned.
Yeah.
How do you prioritize that?
Um.
Because it's, unfortunately, we need to replicate.
I think that is my priority list. So, there are other things, but I think that's my priority list. I think that, again, you know, I took those documents and my living, breathing experience, and then what I'm hearing from families. You know, so for example, one of the things that I really wanted to do was, across the four elementary schools, I wanted to create an affinity space for our kids of color, right? Because, you know, if you're the one kid in a class, you know, how could we get? And that's a tall order, because it's a logistical, like, there's a lot of logistics. But then, in meeting with our families and our parent affinity group, they talked about wanting their kids to know other kids and them to know other, other people, right? Because, listen, we all love diversity. I can get along with anybody in this room, but the fact that I can talk to Judy in Spanish about something is, it's, that's what I'm gonna do. Like, that's fantastic, and that makes me feel like home. So, let alone, you know, other challenges that their kids. So then, I'm like, "Oh, this is great. We kind of can do two things, kill two birds with one stone. Let's do family outings, right? Because that's something we could do, you know? Or we could even do it here at the library, or we can, you know, to get these families together. We don't have to wait till perfect, right? Like, we can move in those steps." And that's what it's been about, right? Like, let's jump our, like, just jump in a little bit, see how it goes, and, and then take it from there.
So I guess with that, if you need any help from us, then you're gonna come knocking on our door?
I am.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think as Sally started to say, "If only we can clone you so we can get more, that much more done."
Thank you.
On the affinity groups, how, how often do they meet? Can they find time to create their own time together, or how, how does that all work?
Right, so like, yes. Kids can find time to be together, but one of the things that's important about these groups is our leadership, right? Like, our adult leadership, because we all need to help our students navigate these spaces. So when they do find time by themselves, it may not be as productive. They already have that, but it's how do we have our staff? So, they meet at variety, I mean, the, the folks that do it, Kayla, Zoe, Leon, Kimberly, I hope I'm not forgetting, the folks that do it are amazing. They give up their lunchtime to meet and have common planning time, and, did I forget someone?
Adonis.
Adonis, thank you, who is here being so supportive. We, because they know how important this work is, but we do have to do more to support them, you know? And so, because it's only timely, one of the things that I talked about in the budget meetings, was, you know, what kind of professional development we can give to these folks to help support that work. Some of them meet every week, some of them meet every other week. They really, I mean, if it were up to kids, they would meet weekly. There, there's definitely like that need. They also vary in the number of students. So there are times that they're in a meeting, there's 20 kids, there are times that there are 15, but they are very religious about it. So, again, when we talk about this work, we talk about growing this work, you know? And they are bringing their friends and they, you know? So Leon comes from the middle school to here to do our high school version of My Brother's Keeper. And when Leon is not here, or is like slightly like two minutes late, because he's looking for, like, ask Lena, they're like in her office, like, "Where's Mr. White? Where's Mr. White?" So, and then these folks, what they've done is that they've gotten together and sort of created a curriculum, if you will, of things that they wanna touch upon during that time with the kids.
And I would say, it came out in our meeting, how powerful the adults in this building particularly have been, and, you know, and at HOMICS have been in their lives. I think that was said time and time again, and many of our students were able to pinpoint that person and how powerful that person is.
They really do, in both, in both buildings.
And that's very special, and a testament to all of you who are those people in their lives, and what a gift that is. And so, yes, we do wanna continue to help foster that, because we absolutely see that is the biggest value around, is having that human connection in our buildings. So thank you to all of you who are those people in our kids' lives.
So if I could just jump in this room, moving this way. One thing I just, we had talked about is emphasize on this was more discovery, right?
Yes.
You were taking on a new role, a new assignment, and not sure what it, it would really kind of boil down to in terms of priorities. So maybe what, is there something that has surprised you in terms of this discovery? That's one question. And the second is, what has been the reaction of the staff seeing you in this role in terms of your interactions, just generally in terms of, of what that has meant in terms of someone who each day is coming into the system focused on this, singularly focused on this as an additive piece?
Yeah. I don't know that anything has totally surprised me. It's more been like, "Right." You know, like, there's always like, "This," and then "Right." I think that the beauty of, and again, like, I have been doing DEI work before I was a title, because that's the work that I've done with all of my students, proving to the world that they could also access amazing schools and education. So some of the things are things that I know are things we have to interact, like, combat, and then it's really like, in a system this big, how do we do that, right? It's not, I mean, it's not, it's not New Rochelle, it's not that huge, but it is big and it is complex, and there are a lot of different things that, that are at play at the same time. So I think it's been amazing to be able to be in a situation, and Margaret and I talked about this as, you know, in that director level, where because of my relationship, this leads to your next question about staff, because of my relationship with some of the staff, even, even as their assistant principal, who in theory is a supervisory role, but we had very strong relationships, but I'm also able to interact with students. And that actually has been really the highlight of it, and like, having them, Elena and Elmo Ninos did like a little feature, just so we could get students to know a little bit more about my role. I'll be more in the HOMICS and have, be more visible. But that has been amazing and powerful, and I think it's, it's important for kids to see, and kids of color. I think about my experience, which I later on in life realized was so unique. In elementary school, all my teachers were Black or Latino, and we just all grew up in the South Bronx, being like, "We're going to college." And so, I think that that piece is important, and I feel it from students, when I'm able to share, and they come to my little office, but they come and they sit and, you know? And I think for staff to really have someone, to really have conversations with about this work that is challenging, conversations with our building-level administrators and how they tackle issues in their building. I've spent a lot of times doing that, I've spent a lot of times working with other directors and troubleshooting, I've worked with Barry, I mean, you name the administrator, and we have interacted in a level of problem-solving and figuring out how to have these conversations. And I feel like that's how the work lives. I'm in a BOSI's group, and we are divided in subcommittees, and people are still at the stage of, "How do I convince, like, my school community that this is important?" And I feel like, I was like, "I can't be in that group. I am not having that conversation." We, we do know that it's important, and we've had very tough conversations, but I think people appreciate, you know, as I said, you know, Sarah Silverman had some of her students come speak to me, Joel LeBert, like, just so many different people. Even before, like, we really knew what my role was, people were like, "Great, I'm going to you." So I think that people feel like we're working on this together. And it is, it's hard work, and it's gonna take some time before we all feel it at that same level, but I think people are definitely utilizing the role. Yep. Are we gonna say something, Athena?
First, thank you, Jenny. That was terrific. Appreciate the work that you're doing. You had mentioned, and you were just talking about it just now, representation. So as you think about the Hiring Recruitment Committee, can you share a bit more with the community regarding what that work looks like? And then also, what can we expect to be different about it? And if you can also throw in there, whether or not promotion is also gonna be a part of what you're looking at as you consider staffing?
Promotion like, promoting of staff members?
Yes.
Is that what you mean? Had not thought about that, but thank you. That's a good thing to think about. I think that one of the things that we're bringing to the table is really standardizing some things about some of the relationships we have with institutions and different organizations that we could pull a different group from. I think part of it is also, I mean, so there's so many layers. Part of it is we realize that through some of the searches that I've been on, that diversity leads to more diversity, right? So, we had candidates in different searches talk about, you know, our DEI work. And so, we know that part of it is we need to, to revamp what we present to the public about what our school, what our district is and what it stands for. So some of that looks like revamping sections of our website. I think one of the things that we're most excited about is really looking at different organizations of people of color and starting to think about, how do we partner up with them? How do we partner up with local colleges? Because different schools have done it. It's more about a standardized approach. So I think that these are the layers of recruitment, right? So exposing ourselves more. I think a big piece is anti-bias training, and we kind of started that with one of the searches that I've worked on, because I think that there are, I think this is just human nature, right? Like, I think we know what we know, and we know this is what, whatever teacher looks like, right? And I think that in examining our own biases, I think it's, and I think that the committee where I led that felt that it was fruitful, is really looking at what are the ways in which what we bring to the table that impact the decisions that we make. So we are starting with our, with our committee, and Claire and I are working together to do some anti-bias training first of those folks, and then continue that work moving forward. So, and then the other pieces are about our job descriptions. How do we promote? Because we actually do have people that, that many of us know, that we're like, "Oh, come to work in Mamaroneck," and they feel like this isn't, they're not gonna be able to do the kind of work that they wanna do, either they're from, coming from New York City or other places. And so, some of it is really explaining our commitment and our diversity and our need for diverse folks here. And then I think that also our affinity spaces will help us think through a little bit, not that that's the, the only purpose of affinity spaces, but it does help us think about, you know, and keep a pulse check on what our, what do our staff feel like? Our staff who are not part of the, any of our specific dominant group. Do we have LGBTQ staff that are openly out and are, feel comfortable with having, you know, sharing parts of their life with their students or with their colleagues? Do we have places where our staff feels valued because they speak another language versus like inferior, because they don't speak perfect English? So it's, it's all of those pieces together.
And what about the promotion piece?
So like I said, I, I, we hadn't even, you know, there's a part of me that had not really thought through that, because I've been so focused, we've been so focused on the retention, but I, I think that that's important to bring back to probably a different committee, but I think it's important to, to bring that back.
Thanks, Jenny. I always love hearing from you, and so I appreciate it tonight a lot.
Thank you.
One of the things that I left our board sessions with the students with was thinking a lot about our, our male students of color. It was a very softer voice and not for lack of experience, I think. And I also worry, you know, we're talking about belonging, I worry about even our young male students of color, you know, in our elementary schools where there are not a lot of men who look like them. And I'm curious if we have to be, I, I'm curious if we've looked at the data and, and how they're doing data-wise, if it's similar in the trends. And I'm also curious, especially in the climate that we're in, in, you know, in our country, if we have to be more deliberate in our, in our efforts there. And it's, you know, I'm usually very much pro-girl in my initiatives, but this is a place where, you know, especially coming out of those meetings and, you know, and just looking at our elementary playgrounds and, and all, lots of data points, I'm, I'm a little worried.
Yeah. And, and, and with good, with good reason. So one of the initiatives, and when I talk about like what we need to do to support these initiatives, that will have great, has great potential, and it's both in the middle and the high school, but we need to help support, bring, making it bigger, is My Brother's Keeper, and that's a great place. And we literally just started the high school in the spring. In the middle school, they have been going on for a couple of years. And really help connect them to the national organization, because there's a lot, there are conferences, there are a lot of things. So part of that is, is that we need to, you know, we need to, you know, we need to, you So part of that is us thinking big, right? Like, and being like, no, we can do all these things. I think that, so while we haven't parceled out the standardized test data, anecdotally, I often feel like there is a point, there, you know, I've seen so many of our black and brown boys through, through the years where we kind of like, they lose engagement, so we lose them to take ownership, we lose them. And then they get it back, but they get it back, you know, junior and senior year. And then they're not, you know, which, I mean, who's to say who's, who has what potential? But in my heart, I feel like then we're not maximizing their potential, right? When I was a college counselor and I first started working in, you know, New York City DOE school, convincing all these people that all these kids could go to college, one of the groups that I worked with was that middle group, like, that kid that had the 78 average. Because that was the kid that with those two points could change their life. They were either gonna go to a community college, which is not a bad thing, and there are a lot of good supports now, but it's either that or a four-year, you know, full ride. And so, you know, so I think about that middle group often, because these kids do graduate, you know, many of them do graduate, some do not, and so we have to address that. But even the ones that do, we really need to be more intentional. So what's awesome, you know, Leon, the other day, sends me this, sends me this text about the math sequence, right? And so he's like, so-and-so, what math should he take next? He's in this math, da-da-da, like, literally randomly, we're, and he's like, okay, I'm just gonna bring him to your office. And, you know, it's that intentionality of having those conversations. I mean, one of the things that I didn't talk about, I could have talked for hours, you know. One of the things that I didn't talk about is that we wanna have our, some of our students of color that are AP students go to the HOMICS and talk. And people constantly say to me, like, isn't that a little too young? And I'm like, no, it's not. And actually, when I spoke to some of the OKR kids, because we're talking about this, right? Like, they have all kinds of other questions for a different presentation, but they, I said, well, when did you decide that you wanted to take AP, whatever? Did you, did you decide that spring of your sophomore year? And they were like, no, no. Like, they looked at me like I was crazy, right? So why do we expect anything less for anybody else, right? So, but I say all that to say that, you know, that's what's, that's, that's the hope for me about these groups and seeing their power, is that that will, and, and it is helpful, I mean, in full disclosure, I shouldn't talk about Leon as he's not here, but I hope he's watching, is, is, you know, they ask Leon questions about like, Mr. White, like, how do you, you know, how, how is life for you, you know? So I think that it's, it's where we, those are places where we can leverage that.
That's great. Thank you. I just want, yeah, I think, and I would encourage all, like, all of us, like, folks listening and watching too, like, how do we think about, you know, how do we think about it at all levels, like, even bringing it down of like, you know, just everyone, you know, the boys and, and the girls, but the boys for this conversation just across the schools. Because I think, you know, I think this is definitely a community board, school partnership scenario. And so just wanted to throw that out there, that I do want to think big on, and would love your ideas on how we really support from a young age.
Yeah, I agree. Which is why, like, again, my first thought was like these affinity spaces, which I'm not giving up on with some of our, for our elementary, because I do think that that's super important.
Agreed.
Yeah.
Another follow-up question for you, Jenny. As you mentioned in the presentation that you're gonna be taking a look at the roadmap and what that looks like for this position, I wondered if you could share some more details about that, because one of the challenges I see is that a lot of things can sometimes be like individual initiatives that are terrific. I, I love the focus on belonging and inclusion. And I've been wanting an affinity group for forever, so thank you so much for, for spearheading that and leading it. But what, where is the, I guess, the oversight? And are you the person that would provide it for like more of the systems changes that we need to do to address the systems barriers that students and families sort of run into across the district?
Yeah, absolutely. So again, this year has been, and I keep, I almost say like it's year zero, because it's that inquiry year of like, what are the places? And so then I, I, I was joking, because I was like, okay, so now it's time to put these things into, you know, like, the accountability piece. And I've talked with my colleagues of, of this role, you know, how, in other districts, it's, you know, how much do you give that, that space for people to learn and to figure out these things? And then you gotta kind of hold people accountable. The, the beauty of this role thus far has been that, that I have been able to, to have that voice and that accountability for other, you know, like, hold other people accountable. And the hope is that, not the hope, but the goal is that, yes, I think that not being, because I was nervous about this at the beginning, like, how would this work with assistant superintendents? And there are all these directors, like, there's a lot of people. And so there's, that, I think that's the layer of oversight. And then the other layer of oversight, to be honest with you, is our equity plan, right? These are the things that we have committed to saying that we are going to do.
Okay. And then what do you look, and hearing you say that this is sort of discovery and learning, but when could we expect to see what the intended impact would be for some of these initiatives?
Yeah.
Looking at what improvements we would see in year three?
Yeah. Awesome question. I think that, so we are looking, we have, we're getting all of the pieces of data together and then we will have a clear picture of what our target number is for different things. One of the things that's an important data piece is gonna be these student belonging surveys, because, and we've, you know, we've talked about what are some of the things that we want to include. There are a lot of outstanding questions out there, like, how do we best collect the data on our student involvement, you know? And students being involved in clubs, students being involved in different things throughout the, the district. There's, so there's still data pieces that I think need to be clarified to help us determine those, those goals. And so my hope is that that's the conclusion of this year, right? Like, that by the end, we can have, okay, in years one, two, and three officially, like, what are these targeted approaches that we want to have? So right now, and it's funny, because they're initiatives, I think that that's the biggest surprise, Bob, that I'm always afraid of like, I don't want a just a one-time thing. But we are actually changing policy, school wa, like, school policy. So maybe not our district level, but of the way we do things. So, you know, out of that conversation that we started talking about, like, student involvement, and how do we get the kids, you know, in student government? And how do we, and we had 90 million questions and comments, right, with the board and with our students of how do we work with this system that we have? And then I brought that to the high school and we all had a conversation. We have some great ideas, which I, I mean, I don't want to disclose here yet, but like, we have some great ideas. But we're, but, but, but our conversation is like, well, we don't want a one-off. We don't want this kid to be the representative, and then if this kid is gone, it's over. So what are changes that we can make to make sure that that is a standard thing? So there are areas, you know, that's the goal. The goal is like, no, for real. And I appreciate that everybody has, is on that page. Like, we're all really like, okay, we can't do this, it can't be a one-off thing. Because to be honest with you, I think that's what we do best. Like, we've done that a lot and do best, right? Like, I think we do a lot of these great initiatives, but I think that we need to do the, the thing that makes it like a system-wide thing. That's what's different about this role.
So your expectation then is that you would be looking at the data both on the student engagement side and also the data on the system side? So meaning like graduation, discipline, referrals to?
Yeah, and I mean, I think that, yes, I haven't even touched upon some of the discipline stuff. I think that, you know, the, the, the thing that's interesting about looking at like that achievement data is going to be coming up with a, a timeline that holds us accountable as well as, that also allows us to see, to give space for the work to, to happen, if that makes sense. And I would love to say that I'm, you know, that, you know, I'm getting together with my colleagues and we're all talking about it, meaning in the region, people with this role. One of the things, you know, Jesse and I like went into like some crazy rabbit hole that we keep going into on looking at the data, and I said this at that board meeting, you know, there's not a lot of Amerinics. I mean, and that's cool and that's also scary, right? Like, there, it, it makes it so that we could really like be pioneers and really push this work forward. But we also have to change the way we see things in order to do that. So it would, I would love to be able to say like, these are, this other district is performing better, and this is the things that they're doing. And that's part of my work this spring, to look at some of these things. But I can't copy and paste. Like, I would love to. And that's even some of the work that I, that I learned in starting schools, right? So starting a school in Newark, New Jersey was very different than starting a school in the Bronx, which was also very different than Washington Heights. We had like just different pieces. So you take that information and then you adjust for, for the group that you have. And that's, that's the work for the rest of the year.
Thank you. I, I wanna open it up so that the community who's here can ask questions if we're. So if anyone had, just come on down to the mic if you could just let us know your name and kids in district, that'd be great, where you are in district.
So my name is Isabel and my daughter is a student of Amerinics. So I actually came with a specific topic in mind in the agenda that was coming to the meeting, but as I've sat through the report, you know, I'm very, very, very pleased to hear that the board is really holding this position accountable. And I can see that by the questions that were being posed by members, and that is extremely encouraging as a parent. So one of the things that I kind of like wrote down in my little paper here, you know, words that Dr. Sharp started, like discovery, deliberative, you know, being intentional and specific things that we want to have students to experience while they're students in Amerinics. And one of them is to eliminate barriers. And eliminate barriers and barriers that are structured. Because a lot of the, the, the initial banner presentation that you had at the beginning said, create and maintain. But what about eliminate barriers? And I think that has to be a core mission of this report, because otherwise we can continue to maintain, but the maintain, maintaining may be actually perpetuating something that is wrong or that needs to be changed or revised based on the student body that you have. So I do have one topic in mind, but before I, I want to finish with that, I do want to say that one thing that I hope to, you know, to see of this committee in the future reports is the analysis of the distribution of benefits. So when there is a disparity that is identified within the student group, that what is the initiative that is going to address the disparity? Because I hear a lot of things, a discovery of opportunities, but I don't see here a discovery of disparities, where there is particular groups. And I want to eliminate really the emphasis on race and ethnicity, because that's just not the whole picture. There are so many other layers and, and array of colors here that need to be considered. So I think that that is just kind of like a, something that is in my mind that I will continue to think about as I come to these meetings, is really the analysis of that distribution. And one of them is something that you mentioned just now, which is the activities related to clubs or extracurricular activities that really bring enrichment to educational attainment. Because one can look only at math in the classroom, but it's the enrichment that really puts a student forward. And I don't know what is the analysis of that benefit or that opportunity within the students. And I don't know that information. I don't even know if the students know. All they know is that there's a lot of things out there and they don't know, they may know how to access it, but sometimes the door is sometimes just always closed. So that's something for you all to think about. So I'll finish with my, my initial agenda, which is the gender neutral restroom for students. To my understanding, there's one in the high school, and it's all the way at the end, and they have to share it with a student, a special ed kids, and then the nursing. I'm, I'm saying my understanding, I may be mistaken.
Yeah, no, it's not, it's not.
But it is a concern, and I hear it, not only from my own child, but also from others. And that is a barrier. And it's a barrier that is based, because if a student cannot go to the restroom in the middle of the day where he or she is comfortable, that is a structural barrier. And that's something that is in the field of facilities management and that raises all these other concerns, blah, 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 blah. I totally understand it. It's not an easy fix, but certainly a fix that can be, you know.
So I mean, I think that Lena touched upon it, and yes, it is all those things, and it also came to my attention when, when there was something happening. So I just want, no, I just want to acknowledge your statement. I think that the other thing about eliminate, it actually is in the language of our, of our, of our plan, but yes, of course, it's, it's to making sure that we are eliminating those barriers.
And I understand also in not finishing with this, and I'm glad that it's already in your, in your radar, great, when a wall definitely will be at least from my end, be holding this committee accountable to these walls as a parent, especially as I have kids that are helping out the food chain, from math to HOMICS and others. So there's plenty coming down my throat, my bloodline. But I will say this, is that as you promote like students to be self-advocates, sometimes the parents need to be next to them and really promote from the school that that communication is dual and a diet that is stronger in this type of committees.
Thank you. Was it Nana?
Hi, my name's Abby Roberts. I'm a parent of my oldest, who's at HOMICS, and my youngest, who's at Central. This is a great presentation. I'm really excited to see all the progress we're making. I was also gonna bring up the gender-neutral bathrooms, because there aren't any at Central either. And I did also just generally want to bring up overall, you know, for those of us parents of kids who may not be able or old enough to speak for themselves and who may not be as visible, like those on the LGBTQIA spectrum, that it feels like there's very little, like, lots of goodwill, but no institutional support at the elementary level. And I really feel like that's quite problematic, and I'd really like that to be looked at and like to know what the plan is to kind of address that for those children.
Thank you. Did you want me to respond now?
Yes, that'd be great.
Well, that is our, I mean, that's when I talked about the next steps, like, those are the things that are involved in our, in my next steps. You will be hearing about it soon.
Okay, yeah, I'm very excited about parent affinity groups too.
Me too.
And I think just to piggyback a little, I think those conversations are conversations we're having as well. And I think, you know, they're always slower than you want them to be, but I want to assure you that they are happening. And I think it's, it's, I like having you speak up because it also reminds us that we have folks that we can lean on and partner with to, to make those conversations more robust. But they, they are happening, and I think you're right that we have work to do, and, and I think it's on our agenda to do it.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
And we're beginning with, we already were in the process of scheduling it at the high school with our students and our parents. And yes, absolutely bringing it down.
And our staff, like, not to put people, you know, it's a difficult thing, because some people say like, well, it's people's personal lives, right? But I want to make sure that we provide an environment, because I think that, again, as I talked about affinity spaces, part of what makes them functional and amazing is being run by the people that are impacted by, by that, right? So it's also empowering our staff to, to feel comfortable in their skin and be able to partner up with me to be able to, to, to do that work.
I, I appreciate that, and I, I really do. And I want to say like the, you know, the responses I've got from like the HOMICS and certain things have been amazing. But I also just want to point out that a lot of these things across the board start in our elementary schools.
I agree, yes.
So I really feel like we should be really focusing on those. I was shocked personally at the lack of institutional knowledge and support, you know, with my, you know, earlier this year. And again, everyone has a goodwill, so that's, that's nice. But, you know, I don't particularly want to be, for my child, to be a pioneer on something that I would have thought that our school system would have.
Right.
You know, in place. So, and, and I think that's true, not probably just for me, my child, you know, but across the board, that it just feels like there should be more focus on the elementary schools, because that's where it starts. Because a lot of the problematic behavior I hear about is in HOMICS, and I don't think it's in HOMICS because of HOMICS.
Agree with you 100%.
I think it's in HOMICS because of those elementary schools.
Right.
And those kids not getting the education they need.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just got, very.
Me too. I, I, yes, I agree.
And I would also just point out that the D E T is taking a look at that policy as well, so we're all looking at it.
Thank you.
Hi, Michelle Metz. I have a graduate. That's great.
Hi, Michelle Metz, I have a graduate, that's crazy, and one at the high school and one at HAMX. Thank you, Jenny, for the presentation, and as someone who's been on the district equity team since the beginning, it's been really inspiring to see the progression of the work and the real thoughtfulness and commitment from teachers and faculty administrators and other community members in this work. I wanted to bring up a couple of points, thank you for bringing up, about the student support committee, and that we've been having affinity groups, although we didn't call it that, for many, many years, for parents of students with disabilities. Monthly, they're in your PTA newsletters, so if you're, you know, everyone's welcome. And also in terms of affinity groups, that's another area, in terms of hidden differences, right, like neurodivergence, I'm sure, you know, we have faculty who are neurodivergent, ADHD, dyslexia, other things like that, and I know our students are developing identity around neurodivergence, and having groups where they have role models would be really important and special. Additionally, I'm the PTA representative for the district equity team, and the PTAs would love to be able to partner in this work, to make the PTAs more inclusive in how we can help promote more inclusion and belonging.
That's great, thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Courtney Stanley, I have two students in Dos Cominos, one in the HAMX and one at M.A.S. I just wanted, thank you, Jenny, this is really exciting to hear, can't wait to hear what's to come. I wanted to highly encourage, as like the next round of focus, is sports in this district. You know, sports are fantastic, but it really comes down to who has the ability to prepare, to try out for these teams come middle school. And in order to make the team, you're often finding kids that really have been playing since kindergarten, right? And so the kids who are playing since kindergarten are parents who can afford to put their kids on teams, learn the sport, get a trainer, and it can go on and on. So, you know, we really, I think in terms of inclusion and enrichment, I feel like there's so many students who just don't even think about it, because it's this big intimidating world, right? So, so I think that the district has a huge opportunity to consider offering, maybe not team sports, but offering consistent instruction in sports, starting in third grade, starting in fourth grade.
So Barry and I, yeah, Barry and I, Barry Sumen, the director, we've had those conversations and talked about, I agree with you. I mean, we could literally, so when I said keep the, you know, that we're going to keep looking at access, because we could literally, we have to literally dissect the different areas, right? Like, we could say the same thing about music, dare I throw myself out there like that. But I think that's honest, I think that's what is going to make us better, right? Like, when we look at these different things and think about how we improve it, so thank you.
And beyond that, I mean, it's really about, especially having my kids in Dos Cominos, like, not only offering it, but truly going in and speaking to these affinity groups and explaining to them, and I hate to say it, but a lot of this needs to be free. It needs to be something that we offer as a district, because when you start to ask people to spend money, people just turn off. There are people out there who just can't afford it.
Well, right. I mean, I think we make a conscious effort in many areas to offer, you know, financial support, like, to make money not be a barrier, but one of the things that I often say is, no, one of the things that I often say is, like, nobody wants to be that person. Like, you just say, oh, I can't do it, you know? So I think that everything you've raised are definitely things that are.
And I understand that obviously not every sport can be represented, but pick the ones that we already spend a lot of resources in, right? Pick soccer, pick basketball, baseball, and start there, and allow these kids who wouldn't even think about it to be able to have an opportunity.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Miuki, I am a student at the high school. I just wanted to add a student voice, it's great to see everyone, but I want to say thank you for the presentation. I think it's amazing for the students to feel that belonging, whether that be through the teachers I speak to, administrators, and I've had the great opportunity to be a part of the D E T team, district equity team, multicultural student union, and I think, I will say, there has been a student push for this work, and just seeing how vast it is, it's not just in academics, and it's not just in extracurriculars, it's a part of our life, it's fundamental. I think it's great to see that being represented by you, so thank you. And as a question, for the board, what are you all looking forward to in this work? What have you been doing yourselves to be a part of it? Like, I know, I think, a few examples of what you've been doing, but what are you most excited about with this D I? And thank you.
Who wants to go first?
I think the part that excites, I'll speak for myself, me the most has continued face-to-face time with our students, and letting that lead our work, and helping that to lead the decisions we make. I feel, as we head into budget season, sort of like the less sort of exciting, glamorous parts of our job, I feel better informed because of the work that we are doing and continuing to do. So for me, that's leading the way, and the more that we get to do that, in spite of the fact that, you know, I'm annoying and nagging Jenny and Kayla, and, you know, helping us to do this, the better, and we love it. So, I mean, for, so I'd say continuing and more, and different groups. And there's so many more that we still want to meet with, and different combinations, and we've seen some kids twice now, and also building those relationships, right, which doesn't happen immediately, and is sort of the nice part of the ongoing work. So I'd say sort of building on what we've begun.
I think part of what I want to see is Jenny, keep doing this work and never stop. It's, but I really love the idea of the groups, I love the idea of people finding places where they belong, and I hope that grows to groups overlapping at some point, so that it's not just a single group, but they start realizing there are more people with similar, similar feelings, and then it hopefully grows so that we become, it becomes more of a community and not isolated into smaller groups, and that's, that's my exciting part of it.
So I was particularly, I guess, touched last year by the outpouring of engagement from students like you, Miuki, who shared about some of the barriers that they've been facing in their day-to-day lives, and I think that re-motivated me to sort of continue to do this work. I'm a part of the D E T, and I'm a part of the policy review committee with you, and I just have to give a shout out to Miuki for being exceptional, an exceptional student representative on the D E T, so thank you. That work is not particularly sexy or fun, but it's impactful, is it? It's very impactful, I'm looking forward to the outcome of that, and what I'm excited about is to see the students come back at the end of the year or next year, to start sharing some of the positive stories around how those changes have impacted them, and how they're experiencing it in their day-to-day lives, I'm looking forward to that.
I think what excites me most is being in the position to be a changemaker. You know, I think there, schools should be places of opportunity, and that needs, you know, to just continue doing that and to be able to see that, so the engagement with the kids is huge, because you get to see it slowly, but it's also hard, you know, I think to, you know, Abby spoke earlier, and in the beginning of the year, we spoke, and after, you know, and after that, I was like, ah, how do we make this happen faster? And Ariana knows I spoke with her, and it's hard, it's, you know, so I think things that are exciting are also frustrating, but then that makes it more exciting, because there's more hinging on the outcomes. And so I think, you know, it's that, it's that ability to change and to create opportunity where it doesn't exist already, and to build on that, and to really move us forward.
Thank you.
It's been a pleasure to do all that work, and you was ready, do you have any?
Well, I don't know if anybody else has any comments, but I feel like this is the perfect ending, because it's what I wanted to say, and then you got up, so then it was like, you know, so I met with Miuki, and I said, you know, I was like, oh, listen, I want to show you, I mean, she's coming to my office, and she sees like, you know, the posters of the different work that we're doing. And so as the adult, right, and I was Miuki as a kid, but like, as the adult, I'm like, oh my God, so like, this is all we're doing, what do you think? And, you know, and I, you know, exactly how it happened, right? And it was awesome, and made me just like reflect and put my adult self behind, because she was like, well, you know, I mean, it was a little, it was, you know, challenging, getting up in front of the audience, but this club I'm doing now, Humans for Progress, like, that is it, and it's life-changing. And I paused, because I'm like, oh, but I wanted you to say something about the D I stuff, but that's the work, right? Like, that's the point, you know? Dr. Schaps will not remember this, but my first year, he asked me, oh, how's it going? And I said, this is the first place that I've ever worked that is exactly like my high school, which is the place that I credit to changing my life. And so, to bring it full circle, like, that is what it's about, right? So we're creating these affinity spaces, but that's not, to Sam's point, that's not the end-all be-all, right? Like, we're giving kids their C legs, right? But it is so that you could be, Miuki, and present in front of staff about the Humans for Progress, and talk about the conference you went, and how that's life-changing, how now you're thinking about what you're going to do in college, and how this is going to be a part of who you become, whatever it is that you do. That's what the work is, right? That's why we're here. We're here to ensure that all students can have that access and can find what it is that they are passionate about. So, thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Jenny, and thank you, everyone, for participating. And as you hear, this is ongoing work, and it's work that we're all really invested in and grateful is happening. So, just to give you, future business, upcoming meetings, Tuesday, January 24th, 7:00 p.m., Board of Education Business Meeting, Tiered Classroom, the topic is humanities, it's a community conversation. Tuesday, February 27th, 7:00 p.m., Board of Education Study Session, Tiered Classroom. Tuesday, February 28th, 7:00 p.m., Board of Education Business Meeting, Tiered Classroom. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Have a good night.